Here.
Schran.
Here.
O'Neil.
Here.
Mills.
Here.
Young.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Doarty. We have a quorum.
We have a quorum, thank you. We'll have our invocation tonight by our good friend Leroy Curvo from the Oak Park Church of God. All who wish to, please rise. Shall we pray? Oh God, our Father, we thank you that we can come to you. We thank you that you're so mindful of every one of us. And Lord, that you let us make all kinds of choices as we go through life. And we thank you, God. And we realize sometime, Father, that we may miss you, but I thank you, God, that you understand and, God, that you always care about us. And Lord, I thank you for our city government. I thank you, God, for the people that have volunteered their time to help Shawnee, to be going in the right direction. And I'm asking you, God, today, in this meeting, that you will touch each one. And dear God, that the decisions that are made here today will be the very best decisions for this city, for this community, and for all the people that will move into Shawnee. Your blessing is now in Jesus' name. Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Attention, position, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks Leroy. Okay, number one, consider approval of agenda.
I said we made the executive session without the arrival of the meeting.
Okay. All right.
I can't get a time.
Note nine, just whenever that happens.
About seven.
Okay, have an executive session. Maybe it'll be done by then. Okay.
Go for it.
Anything else? Okay.
Move to approve the agenda with that change.
Motion by Vice Mayor Peterson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner O'Neil. Call roll, please.
Peterson.
Aye.
O'Neil.
Aye.
Mills.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Schran.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, thank you. Consider approval of consent agenda. Anything to be pulled?
I have a question about the budget amendment approval, so I don't know if I need to... I think I need to pull those and I need to clarify some things. So I'll pull 2B.
2B? Okay, anything else? We're gonna have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Minus 2B.
So moved.
Motion by Vice Mayor Peterson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stevens. Call roll, please.
Peterson.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Schran.
Aye.
O'Neil.
Aye.
Mills.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, 2B. Budget amendments.
And they all say on the actual amendment that they're from the general fund, but...
Yeah, that's an error.
Okay.
Page sixteen... Page thirteen is SMA. It's the same template, and I failed to change the top of the header.
And the issue made by the fund number 501.
Yeah, and the numbers, the numbers themselves are correct as far as the actual transfer of the numbers, the general ledger numbers. Page fourteen is the street improvement fund, and page fifteen is the general fund.
And your letter on page sixteen explains what that is.
Right, how it occurred, basically.
Can I make a motion to approve these with the change that the first one, 501, is for the SMA with that correction then?
Yeah, I mean, that's okay with the... I mean, it's just, it's a wording on the top.
Okay.
The general ledger numbers truly reflect the correct GL numbers.
And then the note that it's not mentioned in the SMA agenda when we get to it?
Yeah, Phyllis, we talked about that at the agenda meeting, and we may need to follow up on that. Because Phyllis didn't...
Okay.
I mean, when she looked at it, she saw general fund.
Right.
She needed that at SMA. That was my mission.
So we'll approve it with that change and with the understanding that our next meeting we'll have to approve that particular SMA adjustment in the SMA agenda next time?
That would be correct.
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Vice Mayor Peterson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner O'Neil. Call roll, please.
Peterson.
Aye.
O'Neil.
Aye.
Mills.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Schran.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, citizens' participation. Okay.
Everybody says first.
They really want us to get done by seven, so we're gonna skip right along here. Okay, let's do some presentations and proclamation. Okay, the first thing is we have Officer of the Quarter to Corporal John Arnett. There we go. I believe you're here for some reason. Got some good stuff here. Okay, here's some of the goodies. On the morning of April 30th, 2007, the Check 'n' Go store located just north of I-40 in Shawnee was robbed and the employee was assaulted. The description of the suspects and their vehicle were broadcasted to all Shawnee Police Department officers. Corporal John Arnett noticed a vehicle matching the suspect vehicle description and pursued the vehicle east on I-40. The suspects crashed their vehicle and the chase turned into a manhunt throughout a wooded area. Corporal Arnett and several law enforcement agencies were involved in the manhunt. The suspects were shortly thereafter taken into custody. I think we saw that in the paper, that's pretty cool. Because of Corporal John Arnett's professionalism and attention to duty, two dangerous individuals were taken into custody. It was with great pleasure that we present Corporal John Arnett with the Shawnee Police Department Officer of the Quarter award and a nice little plaque, and I think the chief has something for you as well. Okay, the second is a... We have a resolution of appreciation to Wayne Croll for 25 years of service to the city of Shawnee. I have resolution number 6307 that I would like to get a motion on to pass.
Move to approve the resolution.
Motion by Vice Mayor Peterson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schran. Call roll, please.
Peterson.
Aye.
Schran.
Aye.
O'Neil.
Aye.
Mills.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I was looking for Wayne. That's what I was looking for, Wayne. He's not here. He's probably out the lake boating, enjoying himself. Okay. Resolution expressing appreciation to Wayne Croll for 25 years of loyal service to the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, directing that said resolution be spread upon the official records of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and authorizing a copy be presented to Wayne Croll. Whereas, July 25th, 1982, was a significant day in the city of Shawnee for the reason that Wayne Croll commenced his employment with the city as a Shawnee police officer on said date and has served the city and its inhabitants for 25 years. On September 25th, 1988, Wayne became a senior police officer. He achieved the rank of sergeant on July 1st, 1992, lieutenant on August 21st, 1994, and major. Major Croll also served in the capacity of deputy chief of police in 2005 and acting police chief in 2006. Major Croll has elected to retire effective June 30th, 2007. Whereas, Major Croll has demonstrated his ability to meet the challenges given him with dedication and loyalty throughout the years. And whereas, it is both fitting and proper for the city of Shawnee to recognize Wayne Croll for his many contributions to the city. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, that they hereby express to Wayne Croll their appreciation for his many years of service to the city and its inhabitants. Be it further resolved that the resolution be spread upon the official records of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and that a copy be presented to Wayne with Wayne with best wishes for many years of happiness. Passed and approved this 16th day of July, 2007. So we'll get that to him. And last, but not least, we'll have a proclamation for Art Jackman Day in the city of Shawnee. I'm just tickled to death that Art was able to come tonight. Heard that he wasn't gonna be able to be here because he needs to take care of his wife, but I'm glad you took the time to be here and let me honor you.
Thank you.
Let me read some good stuff about you here. I know that on... And this is not a surprise to you, I know, but on Thursday, the Expo Board or the SCCDA is going to honor Art with a reception at noon at the Expo, at the Conference Center, and for his 12 years of community service to building the Expo and the rodeo and making it successful. So I think it's only fitting that we let everybody know on cable here and the public what kind of great steward you have been for the city and your dedication to making Shawnee a better place, not only downtown where you kind of started with J.C. Penney, but expanding that throughout the community. So actually, Thursday, July 19th, will be the official Art Jackman Day in the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma. Whereas, Art Jackman has dedicated his life to the community and has demonstrated in many practical ways his deep and genuine love for this city and the surrounding area. And whereas, these years of service have been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interest of the community as he has worked for the betterment of its economic and cultural development. And whereas, Art Jackman has served the community with distinction in a long list of public appointments and offices, demonstrating his willingness to place his concern for the public good ahead of his own personal interests. And whereas, Art Jackman has been an active participant in civic affairs and projects, having held responsible positions on many boards and organizations, including 12 years as a member of the Shawnee Civic and Cultural Development Authority, Shawnee Urban Renewal Authority, City Advisory Board, Parking Authority, Shawnee Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Shawnee, Salvation Army, and the Girl Scouts. And whereas, Art Jackman has been an active member of the Qantas for over 47 years and received his first Top Ten Award in 2002. And whereas, Art Jackman retired from J.C. Penney's after 38 years of service. And whereas, throughout his career, he has earned the respect of other civic leaders and the affection of a host of area residents who are proud to call him friend. Now therefore, I Chuck Mills, Mayor of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, by the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim July 19th, 2007, as Art Jackman Day in the city of Shawnee, dated the 16th day of July, 2007.
I'll make this real beef. I want to thank you. I have lived in several cities for pennies. I used to move every three years, sometimes once a year. And I tell you, Shawnee has been a better town. They've been more friends. And I tell you, Shawnee is a good town, better than the towns that I've been in. I've been in a lot of them, working things. So I might still work for Shawnee. Thank you a lot for this.
It's treasures like that man that make this community what it is and make us proud to be part of Shawnee, so. Okay, number five, city manager's presentation of employees of the month to Public Works Line Maintenance Group. So we got a group award, right? Don't be bashful, come on.
What up? These guys are the horses in the city. They do a brutal job, to be honest with you. I mean, when the water lines break and it's zero degrees and rain and ice, those guys, this group right here is the ones down there fixing that water line. So I can't put into words how much I appreciate these men. So we're gonna give you this award, and I'm not even gonna read what's on here, but we'll read the names. Alan Blankship. David Domon. Not here. Okay, Poncho. Mike McLendon. Brad Schmidt. Keith Ward. And Calvin Wilson. And Sterling is the super presenter. That's right. So again, I really appreciate you guys, and if anybody wants to say anything, then this is the time you can do it. But we're gonna take you to lunch. Kelly, I don't know where we're gonna take them, but someplace nice. And so let's hold this thing up.
What happened, Jim, the reason they're doing this, one of the many reasons, is they worked 32 hours on main breaks, getting the fix. They went home, got about 12 hours to sleep, then came back, worked 32 more hours, and never cried, still treating the customers good, no problems.
Thank you guys for coming tonight. Appreciate what you do. Okay, moving right along. Number six. Public hearing and considered ordinance rezoning property located at 39300 West MacArthur from RE Rural Estates to C3 Automotive and Commercial Recreation District for use as a storage facility. Applicant plain needs for MacArthur Street Storage, LLC. Public hearing is open. Staff report.
This is the planning commission's recommendations for approval. The property in question, actually, when the conference of plan was put together when we started, was outside the C limits. The property immediately south, which is the existing facility, was already under construction. And when we annexed it in, we assigned the zoning classification of C3. This site actually will be north of that and will be an extension of the existing facility. The conference of plan identifies the area as residential or agricultural. In one case, it's recreational, residential. And this is actually something we probably ought to address at a later date, modifying the future land use map to reflect the area. Just backing up too, as you can see, actually, there's not anything that's commercial up there. The commercial would be red, and this original site, being the storage facility, is right here, and this is north of it. The commercial would be red, and then some of it would also be pink, which we reflect the pink over here. So it's something that we probably ought to look at in the coming months as to making amendments to the future land use map to reflect these changes. The planning commission, in looking at it, felt like it was in conformance with the overall intent of the conference of plan in that we would be looking at larger commercial developments, minimizing the access points onto the arterial streets. And since it was... Basically, it's an extension of an existing facility, the recommendation from planning commission for approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Business in the storage line must be good. I see those popping up everywhere. We have a lot of need for that.
Houses aren't getting any bigger. And it's that way everywhere. Houses are not getting any bigger, and people are running out of space in garages. And in this case, some of the facility, and I believe what was presented to the planning commission, was that most of this or some of this will be conditioned space, which helps to preserve furniture, pictures and such where you don't have the fluctuation in temperature and the saturation as far as the condensation and such.
Right. Okay. Any questions? Anybody wish to speak against? Anyone wish to speak for? Come on, come on up here. You have to speak up here. If you're gonna speak, you gotta come up here, you gotta give us your... Give us your name and a little sales pitch and, you know.
Well, I'm plain needs, and I am a principal owner of the facility, and it is an existing facility. The part that we'll be adding to is just like... It's like an infield, you know? We're not changing our street face. We're... We do serve the community. We feel like we have a valuable service for the community. We do have... Right now, we are the largest regional... Our largest climate control unit in the region. We have about half of our facility now is climate control. And we serve not only residential, but also a lot of businesses, some government entities. But anyway, I'll be glad to answer any questions that anybody might have. Try my best, anyway.
I have a question, and I want to ask it to the planning director first, and then if there's a response. Will a site-proof fence be required on this since the abutting properties are RE?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Will the current location have a site-proof fence too? Will it extend to what's there right now?
I believe there is a site-proof fence along the east side, and the property on the west currently is already zoned commercial. There's an office that's next to it. I believe it was Wilson's Electric. But there may... I don't recall exactly how far back the property extends, but yes, there should be a site-proof fence any time that C3 is abutting residential.
Okay. In our zoning map, you show that RE abuts even the old one. So because there's a commercial facility there and it is the same zoning as what's currently there, then that's okay? And a site-proof fence will go on this addition?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
Anybody else? Okay. We'll close the public hearing. Motion. One way or the other.
I make a motion to rezone the property from RE to C3.
Motion by Vice Mayor Peterson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Young. Read the title, please.
The notice concerns zoning classification following strike progress located in the quarter members of the city of Shawnee, following county, Oklahoma. Track line starts at point 1484 feet west, according 35.66 feet north of the southeast corner of Southwest Quarter, Section 10, County 10 North Range Streets, to Union Road in Fallon County, Oklahoma. It's north 84.33 feet, then east 560 feet, and southbound 84.33 feet, towards west 560 feet, company gang. Zoned property from RE Rural Estates to C3 Automotive and Commercial Recreation District, individual running back to the Shawnee Court.
Call roll, please.
Peterson.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Schran.
Aye.
O'Neil.
Aye.
Mills.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, thank you.
We actually thought of carries.
Okay. Okay, number seven. Public hearing and considered ordinance rezoning property located at 4355 North Harrison from A1 Agricultural District to C3 Automotive and Commercial Recreation District for use as retail use. Applicant Michael McQuain. Public hearing is open. Staff report.
Ms. Mayor, the planning commission's recommendations for approval. This request is in conformance with the conference of plan. Harrison being a commercial corridor. The property will access off of Harrison Street, and as you can see, our aerial maps are older. The Sonic is actually located on the corner. This property is about 140, 150 something feet away from Sonic, to the south. And Mr. McQuain has already made an application to rezone the property in between, and my understanding is that's the intention, is that he will be developing that parcel now instead of this one. But it exceeds all the minimum requirements as to C3. The property around it is A1, but he owned it and it has... Or is in the process of selling it to a developer. So we probably will see it coming forward next year or so for rezoning to C3 as well.
Anyone wish to speak against? Anyone wish to speak for? Questions?
Mike, what's the impact on developing these properties one at a time? What's the impact on traffic and turning points and those kinds of things?
As a commercial district, say, you know, a strip center or something like that, you can consolidate some of the driveways, but we still have a minimum driveway separation or a maximum driveway separation. That would be the same. It's either 175 or 200 feet. Do you remember the two? It's something like 200 feet along it. So it's gonna be the same. As parcels are developed individually, you could run into the situation where you could cause a problem with a driveway location and how it impacts adjoining property. But since it's all under single ownership, it would require plating of this single lot. As long as the rest of the property does not drop below five acres, you could do that. But when we start looking at extending the water lines and things like that, we would be looking at plating, doing a primer plat for the entire development.
Okay.
Other questions? Close the public hearing. The motion.
A motion to approve the rezoning from A1 to C3.
Motion by Vice Mayor Peterson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Young. Read the title, please.
The notice concerns zoning classification following strike progress located in the quarter members of the city of Shawnee, Fallon County, Oklahoma. Track line located in northwest quarter of Section 5, County 10 North Range Streets, to Union Road in Fallon County, Oklahoma. Starts as follows. Getting at a point 100 feet, 108 feet, north 89 degrees, 13 minutes, 10 seconds east, 589 foot, 91 feet, staff 10 streets, 56 minutes, 19 seconds east. Northwest quarter, says northwest quarter, set point being on the east driveway line of Harrison Street. It's north 89 degrees, 13 minutes, 10 seconds east, distance of 572.6 feet, distance of 108 feet, 43 minutes, 46 seconds east, is 120.02 feet. And south 89 degrees, 13 minutes, 10 seconds west, distance of 194.9 feet, north point on the east driveway line, Harrison Street. It's north 100 feet, 56 minutes, 19 seconds west, long said, east driveway line, distance of 120 feet, 20 beginning. Zoned property from A1 Agricultural District to C3 Automotive and Commercial Recreation District, individual running back to the Shawnee Court.
Call roll, please.
Peterson.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Schran.
Aye.
O'Neil.
Aye.
Mills.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, thank you. Number eight. Public hearing and considered ordinance rezoning property located on Trune Circle, east of Bryan and north of Augusta from PUD planned unit development based on R1 Single Family Residential to PUD planned unit development based on R1 Single Family Residential with higher density for use as single-family homes. Applicant David Thomason, OBO Highlands, LLC. Public hearing is open. Staff report.
The planning commission's recommendations for approval with the requirement of a sidewalk along Bryan Street. This property was previously platted under our older subdivision regulations, but since this will be a plat and with final plat coming before you in the future, they felt like we should come under the current code. I will point out that they felt like a compromise was Augusta is a collector's street and not require it on Augusta, but to require it on Bryan Street. The little circle there looks like a path that actually will be a sidewalk that the developer has put into the PUD that they will be putting in.
Down below.
Is that a cul-de-sac off of... Hold on a second.
Looks like it.
It is. How do I unfreeze... There it is. Okay. I was hitting multiple buttons. My hands are fat. But you can see that that's an actual trail inside. There'll be a brick fence around the property. The current Trune Circle is a public street. It will be moving toward vacation, where it will be a private street, and then with the cul-de-sacs... then with the cul-de-sacs coming in off of it. Uh, the, um, primary changes, you know, is the density, that's going from eighteen units, uh, excuse me, from six lots, which exceeded our minimum area, uh, six thousand square feet, uh, to eighteen units. Uh, but, uh, the type of, or, or the, the market that's identified in the PUD, as far as the, the people that would be living here, uh, would be lower traffic generators being, uh, there's an age restriction. Uh, this is a completely, uh, foreign concept, uh, in Shawnee and most of Oklahoma. Uh, it's kind of taking a, a tenement or a condo type of development that you would see in, um, more urbanized areas and applying it or overlaying it onto a more rural or subdivision type of, uh, development. The common areas would be everything that's not purple on the screen. So, the roads are a common area, the, uh, everything out there, everything with the exception of about three or four foot of a footprint around the house. So, there would be a property owners', uh, you know, maintenance facility or maintenance requirement that the developer intends to maintain and control. Uh, the common areas would include, uh, I think some of the amenities that were identified, not only the trail, uh, but also they'd be doing their own trash service as far as picking the trash up at individuals and taking it to a dumpster, similar to what you would see in an apartment complex. Uh, you know, the individual would own the purple square, own the house and two to three foot around the house. So, and then would own into, or would be required to, uh, pay into a fee to maintain the rest of the facility, uh, similar to what you would see in a, a neighborhood association. So, it is a very innovative approach. Uh, the planning commission in looking at it, uh, felt like it, it does conform with conference of plan in that it, it is going to diversify a lot of the housing, you know, this is a, a, a market that has not been tapped, uh, and see what, you know, see how it works. I have seen a similar development, uh, was not age restrictive, uh, in Oklahoma City that has been very, very successful, uh, over on the south side of, with its vineyards or something like that, that PBO done put together and it's a very exclusive neighborhood. Uh, and, uh, the developer in this case plans to, um, build all the structures himself. There are restrictions as to what the buildings will look like in the PUD, uh, so we felt like that was, uh, you know, something that, um, we, you know, well, the PUD requires it, therefore we can enforce it, but that's something that, you know, any PUD, they're supposed to be given and take. And with the higher densities, we, we will have more green space or have green space and then, you know, it would also be available, you know, within the, the area. Be happy trying to answer any questions.
This is, uh, obviously a different concept from the patio homes that are just to the east that have small little yards. This doesn't really have any yard other than the common area.
Correct.
I was getting a little excited when you said sidewalks and, uh, I was thinking Bryant Street with all the sidewalks we need to have up and down there, but, uh...
Right, no, there will be a sidewalk on Bryant Street.
On Bryant, but not on Augusta.
Correct.
Okay.
The planning commission's recommendation is that, and that was a change that was in, uh, that they made. Uh, planning commission wants a sidewalk on Bryant Street, uh, spoke with Mr. Tomlinson as latest this afternoon. He said that that was, you know, he, he was agreeable to that.
That's big, 'cause, I mean, we got people running out there and, and walking all the time and they will walk around up in, around the country club, but getting out on Bryant Street with traffic and all that, we, we desperately need a path all the way to the whole length that I think it'd be well-used, 'cause they're in the street already or up on the grass, so that's good. How, how large, how many square feet are we talking about? Uh, it's nine hundred square feet, thousands?
Thirteen.
Thirteen to eighteen hundred? Okay, bigger than that.
And what is gonna be the age restriction?
Fifty-five and up, no children? No playgrounds in there, huh?
Yeah, the, the red thing is a safe room. Uh, that was, I couldn't think of what the, the wording was, uh, but they are intending to put in a safe room, have all the postal deliveries at the front gate, so...
Mike, there's language in here about the size of streets, um, to be wide enough for, says, regular service vehicles. Is that gonna be an issue with fire trucks and things?
The current cul-de-sac that you see there with the island in the middle is, that's there now. And, uh, the fire department, you know, I believe when, uh, when we were looking at it, uh, the engineer felt like that could be reached as far as from that cul-de-sac to any of the homes. It's currently, uh, a single lot, if not two lots, off of that cul-de-sac and that there will be a fire hydrant, uh, I believe that was a fire hydrant at that point, right there.
Okay.
But there would be fire hydrants at each of the areas and I don't recall what the radius was on that, but that was not intended to...
So, they'll be able to reach it like they would have if there were still six homes on there, except there would not have been a home, um, probably those last three in that tight corner. That, those are the three that I was more concerned about, but there's gonna be a fire hydrant up that way.
Right, so, there's a fire hydrant here, but that, that was well within a, I believe that that was within a three hundred foot distance, if I, you know, it's been a while...
And those things will be looked at when the final plat and everything comes through?
Yeah, we, uh, submitted this to everyone as far as a review and hadn't earned any, back any, any complaints or any problems with, uh, with certain areas, but we can address it as far as, um, you know, the width and any other issues that the fire department has at that time.
Okay. The other question I had then was about, it calls for no storm drain structures to just use, uh, flow of the land, I guess, for the water to drain off. Is that acceptable? Has that already passed? Engineering also?
Engineering had reviewed that.
For that area?
And there, I believe that's how the current facility or current cul-de-sac is unless there's a drainage inlet on, on the cul-de-sac. Do you recall, John? Okay, so it's currently surface runoff.
It talked about, um, hard surface and, and impervious surface and it seems like just the size of these homes, it, they, and the number of them could be about the same amount of surface or more than what six homes and their driveways and patios could have been. I was just concerned about that too.
As far as the size and the coverage, uh, you would have probably a little bit less than what you could have on the, the current lots. You know, there's a minimum area, but there wasn't a maximum. We have a coverage, can exceed thirty percent coverage, but on a, you know, say a ten thousand square foot lot, you're talking a very large house, you know, you know. So, you're talking a seven thousand square foot house. So, I mean, you, you could've gotten a, a very large structure on each of those lots.
Just one of those things after watching water flow the last, or a few weeks ago, very concerned about no storm sewers and subdivisions.
And the, the, as far as on that, um, that creek and the flooding on Trune Circle further south?
Further south.
Uh, I got a, an email from the engineer who said that he went out and set stakes in that area and found that there was very minimal if no flooding on this property and that he felt very comfortable with this development and his assumption as far as the runoff. Uh, but I will say that, that the calculations that they will provide, uh, you know, will meet our, our codes. You know, that, that, there's nothing in here that says that they can, you know, you do, do away with our drainage codes. They would still have to look at the pre-imposed calculations.
And the last question is, um, the maintenance of the public areas being kept up by, let's just call it an association, the, the members of the, of the owners. My concern is fifteen years from now, um, what do we have in place to ensure that there's still an association there that's still doing what it needs to do?
The, we actually had that same concern, yeah, as to, you know, what happens when Mr. Tomlinson moves on or it's determined that this is not a feasible project. Uh, the common areas actually are going to be owned by a single individual, uh, so, uh, each, you know, it, you know, worst case scenario, 'cause we ran into it a lot in Oklahoma City, is that the homeowner association quit paying taxes on the common areas, so then the county takes it back for back taxes and then says, "Okay, city, now you maintain it." And we had all these little park-like areas that by default we were inheriting. Uh, there's not a really good answer for that, you know, because you run into the same situation with houses, you know, homeowner associations. In this case, it, it is owned by a single individual and, uh, that, uh, anytime that there are liens placed on it, you can go back on that individual, it can be sold, unlike common areas.
It can be.
So, I mean, there, yeah, there, yes, it's an individual owned. Everything outside of that, uh, that's in green will be owned by, uh, Mr. Tomlinson.
So, is it owned by him or by Highlands LLC?
The, uh, the developer, I, I'm assuming...
Is it gonna be by you personally or by your LLC? Okay.
............................................................................................................................................................................................................
like tenement homes or condos in New York City or a larger city actually would operate if...
But we need to think about that because as, in this case, a builder is becoming, thinking more out of the box and trying to provide our citizens with alternative housing, then we need to understand that, but we need to have the other things in place that can work with this. We're just used to the vanilla cookie cutter kind of thing, but we need to be thinking about that.
If you would like, we can have, we can insert in there that any time, that the property would revert back to a common or a neighborhood association if something like that occurs. With the PUD, we can put that, that type of language in there.
We're really better off if we have the common areas owned by a private individual because if Mr. Tomlinson decides that he doesn't want to play out here anymore, he can sell his common area either to a different developer or to a private individual who wants to own the common area and still have that real estate interest. And I think, you know, what we have to remember is Mr. Tomlinson has developed some properties in this town and has developed some properties in Central Shawnee and has done a great job and has rental properties and stuff. So, this is not just someone from outside our community who's come in with this outside of the box idea that we're taking a chance on. This is someone who's well-known and has a reputation here. So, I don't think he's going to leave us hanging.
And does quality work.
And does quality work. And he's not going to leave us hanging because we all know where he lives. But I like the idea of a separate property owner. I don't think we've had that. I mean, we can all think of instances in our mind in this town that are an issue right now, and I don't think it was held as a separate property and a separate owner and that, maybe that would have helped. I kind of like that as a different idea, I really do.
There's one person that's on the hook instead of just some unknown entity out there that just, yeah, that you go, who's in charge? It's like, well, we don't know.
Yeah.
And the Larkins Meadow Community Swim Pool comes to mind.
Absolutely, yeah.
And it was a nonprofit that was incorporated outside of the homeowner association. And where we've run into problems is that the, that nonprofit group went defunct. The attorney passed away 15 years ago, and we were sending notice as the law required to an attorney. And, you know, the other attorneys in the office thought my office was crazy. And said, well, he's been gone a while. But in that case, that was an issue. Whereas here, you know, you do have an individual that we can track it back to versus some entity that can dissolve.
Yeah, I think the idea that we, you know, we've got like Legacy Park and we've got some other areas for seniors in Shawnee based upon income and age and things, but the idea that we're going to do something that's more, you know, I hate to say higher end, but for people that have outgrown their big homes, whether it's in North Ridge and the yard or even, you know, even Town and Country, people that, like my mom, that they don't need a big house and a big yard anymore. This is just a great place and it's a secure environment. And I think that would be a wonderful opportunity.
David, come up and address some of that. I know you've probably been thinking about some things. Come up and address us here on maybe some of the concerns since you're out of the box here. I know you're more comfortable with a hammer and a saw. Oh, yeah, you're wearing pants. I'm wearing the next shorts on.
Nice shirt.
Wow.
So, there's another little twist that hasn't been told that will also hold me to the fire is one financing option I'm offering is about one-third of the price of the house. I'll carry on second. It's not due until the death of the homeowner or until they go into nursing care, so I'll be able to look for years and years to come. I'll also offer a lifetime guarantee on the house because of that reason because if the whole thing goes to fudge, I'm left holding a lot of money that will never come back to me because I've got to keep, I've got to keep the place nice in order to protect my mortgage. So, I'm going to offer a cash sale. They can buy it outright or in that scenario, so I'll be able to look for a lot of money for signs that I will be able to walk there from.
How many acres is that little piece right there? Roughly, it's kind of a funny shape, but...
About three and a half.
Really?
Wow.
Pretty cozy.
That's great.
Guess other questions that they...
There'll be a gatehouse also at the entrance. Someone may have a gate that makes happen every day to check on the people that are in the ridge or breaking the gate.
There it is. Nice service.
I don't qualify yet. I just didn't sign pat up.
You're creeping out of the creepers up there.
We'll all want to.
Yeah.
There you go, Warren. You barely qualify. Okay, next thing. Anyone else wish to speak for or against? Okay. Close the public hearing. Are we ready to make a motion?
Sure. I would make a motion to approve the rezoning of the property located on Train Circle.
Motion by Commissioner Stevens.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Young. Read the title.
Notice to second class engagement on the strip rock location in Shawnee Oklahoma two eight, blocks one, two, three, four, five, six, block two, three, six, and seven, eight, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, one thousand, two thousand, three thousand, four thousand, five thousand, six thousand, seven thousand, eight thousand, nine thousand, ten thousand, eleven thousand, twelve thousand, thirteen thousand, fourteen thousand, fifteen thousand, sixteen thousand, seventeen thousand, eighteen thousand, nineteen thousand, twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand, twenty-two thousand, twenty-three thousand, twenty-four thousand, twenty-five thousand, twenty-six thousand, twenty-seven thousand, twenty-eight thousand, twenty-nine thousand, thirty thousand, thirty-one thousand, thirty-two thousand, thirty-three thousand, thirty-four thousand, thirty-five thousand, thirty-six thousand, thirty-seven thousand, thirty-eight thousand, thirty-nine thousand, forty thousand, forty-one thousand, forty-two thousand, forty-three thousand, forty-four thousand, forty-five thousand, forty-six thousand, forty-seven thousand, forty-eight thousand, forty-nine thousand, fifty thousand, fifty-one thousand, fifty-two thousand, fifty-three thousand, fifty-four thousand, fifty-five thousand, fifty-six thousand, fifty-seven thousand, fifty-eight thousand, fifty-nine thousand, sixty thousand, sixty-one thousand, sixty-two thousand, sixty-three thousand, sixty-four thousand, sixty-five thousand, sixty-six thousand, sixty-seven thousand, sixty-eight thousand, sixty-nine thousand, seventy thousand, eighty thousand, ninety thousand, ninety-one thousand, ninety-two thousand, ninety-three thousand, ninety-four thousand, ninety-five thousand, ninety-six thousand, ninety-seven thousand, ninety-eight thousand, ninety-nine thousand, ninety-nine thousand, one thousand, two thousand, three thousand, four thousand, five thousand, six thousand, seven thousand, eight thousand, nine thousand, ten thousand, eleven thousand, twelve thousand, thirteen thousand, fourteen thousand, fifteen thousand, sixteen thousand, seventeen thousand, eighteen thousand, nineteen thousand, twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand, twenty-two thousand, twenty-three thousand, twenty-four thousand, twenty-five thousand, twenty-six thousand, twenty-seven thousand, twenty-eight thousand, twenty-nine thousand, thirty thousand, thirty-one thousand, thirty-two thousand, thirty-three thousand, thirty-four thousand, thirty-five thousand, thirty-six thousand, thirty-seven thousand, thirty-eight thousand, thirty-nine thousand, forty thousand, forty-one thousand, forty-two thousand, forty-three thousand, forty-four thousand, forty-five thousand, forty-six thousand, forty-seven thousand, forty-eight thousand, forty-nine thousand, fifty thousand, fifty-one thousand, fifty-two thousand, fifty-three thousand, fifty-four thousand, fifty-five thousand, fifty-six thousand, fifty-seven thousand, fifty-eight thousand, fifty-nine thousand, sixty thousand, sixty-one thousand, sixty-two thousand, sixty-three thousand, sixty-four thousand, sixty-five thousand, sixty-six thousand, sixty-seven thousand, sixty-eight thousand, sixty-nine thousand, seventy thousand, seventy-one thousand, seventy-two thousand, seventy-three thousand, seventy-four thousand, seventy-five thousand, seventy-six thousand, seventy-seven thousand, seventy-eight thousand, seventy-nine thousand, eighty thousand, eighty-one thousand, eighty-two thousand, eighty-three thousand, eighty-four thousand, eighty-five thousand, eighty-six thousand, eighty-seven thousand, eighty-eight thousand, eighty-nine thousand, ninety thousand, ninety-one thousand, ninety-two thousand, ninety-three thousand, ninety-four thousand, ninety-five thousand, ninety-six thousand, ninety-seven thousand, ninety-eight thousand, ninety-nine thousand, one thousand, two thousand, three thousand, four thousand, five thousand, six thousand, seven thousand, eight thousand, nine thousand, ten thousand, eleven thousand, twelve thousand, thirteen thousand, fourteen thousand, fifteen thousand, sixteen thousand, seventeen thousand, eighteen thousand, nineteen thousand, twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand, twenty-two thousand, twenty-three thousand, twenty-four thousand, twenty-five thousand, twenty-six thousand, twenty-seven thousand, twenty-eight thousand, twenty-nine thousand, thirty thousand, thirty-one thousand, thirty-two thousand, thirty-three thousand, thirty-four thousand, thirty-five thousand, thirty-six thousand, thirty-seven thousand, thirty-eight thousand, forty thousand, forty-one thousand, forty-two thousand, forty-three thousand, forty-four thousand, forty-five thousand, forty-six thousand, forty-seven thousand, forty-eight thousand, forty-nine thousand, fifty thousand, fifty-one thousand, fifty-two thousand, fifty-three thousand, fifty-four thousand, fifty-five thousand, fifty-six thousand, fifty-seven thousand, fifty-eight thousand, fifty-nine thousand, sixty thousand, sixty-one thousand, sixty-two thousand, sixty-three thousand, sixty-four thousand, sixty-five thousand,[558.12]
Okay, so we have a motion?
Well. Make a motion to approve the ordinance establishing a fee for return checks in Shawnee Municipal Court.
Motion by Vice Mayor Peterson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stevens. Read the title, please.
......... Creating new section of law and codified section 12-26 Article 1 of Chapter 12 of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, establishing a fee of $35 if applied with court costs and any person who pays their fine or handle of court costs with a check they just returned by the bank for any reason, providing for servability and declaring emergency. I would like one comment following what Commissioner Stevens was asking also about getting this on with court costs. If they never do pay their fine, it's another week, $5 a day, $35 is another week. So, you can't.
Oh.
That's another little thing.
Little twist.
Try to enforce that.
Okay. Go roll, please.
Peterson?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Schran?
Aye.
O'Neil?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, thank you.
.....................
Can we enforce this immediately? I mean, administration-wise?
Y'all know my thoughts.
Yeah, typically, I know.
I was thinking you said you should do it, but you're like, "Yeah."
We could, but I don't think there's any real big ones to do.
Okay. So it'll take effect in 30 days.
Right.
No motion? Okay.
Nope.
Moving right along to lucky number 13. Discuss the possible enactment of a social host ordinance. I added this in, something I've been carrying for a few months. From the Oklahoma Municipal League and the Oklahoma Conference of Mayors have been promoting the social host ordinance that Edmond passed some months ago, maybe a year ago. Tecumseh passed this ordinance a couple of months ago and another handful of communities. They will continue to promote this, the Municipal League will. We'll see this at the OML Annual Conference in September. It's not going to go away. This is just being responsible citizens and promoting a type of lifestyle that in this community that we don't condone the giving of, I don't know a better word, giving of alcohol to other people's kids. I guess you can do it with your own kids, but when it comes to other kids, you're going to get a fine if you're caught for hosting a party and promoting underage drinking. So Chief, you've got some information. We have Jan Tipton with us tonight from Gateway. Had a meeting this afternoon and got some more details and commitment from her and the school officials. So Chief, shoot.
Okay. Today we had a meeting with the Shawnee Asset Building Alliance as a Helping Kids Succeed. What that group is, is a group of Shawnee community members who are concerned about the underage drinking in the city. And the discussion focused around the Edmond city ordinance, which was enacted there. And I was supplied with some information from a recent council meeting from Edmond where Police Chief Bob Ricks talked about the new ordinance. He stated that since the social host ordinance became effective, there have been 16 arrests through April 4th. He stated the police are seeing a significant change in how the parties, how the parties where alcohol is served are reducing. And so it's been a benefit there in Edmond and the policy that's in the packets here today reviewing that, it looks to me to be a very good ordinance that I think would be beneficial to our community in curbing this type of behavior.
Without this ordinance, if it happened tomorrow, how would you treat that? What violation would the parents be? Would they be cited?
Yes, that's a good question. There is, on the books, there are. You can't provide alcohol to under 21 under the state law. They have that governed there, but that could be filed, of course, it has to be filed with the District Attorney's Office where if you choose to enact an ordinance here, that would be handled through the city prosecutor's office. So this specifically outlines these types of gatherings. Now, normally, these are private, maybe parties or such, and maybe how the police get involved to it is you might have a loud music call at a residence and when the police show up, it's obvious that there's underage age people in there and they're drinking alcoholic beverages and somebody there at the residence has been, you know, responsible for allowing this to go on. So that could be dealt with with this ordinance.
So that means that there's an adult on the premises as opposed to the parents that go out of town and come home to find out that there's been a party at their home. If they're not present or they didn't sanction or allow the gathering and you have some proof of that, those parents aren't going to be cited?
That's correct. They would not be cited under this. So in other words, you'd have to put the case together and present it, so it would have to be able to show in your case that they knowingly allowed this activity to go on.
And they would be charged under city statutes, under city ordinances?
That's correct.
Or if they're repeat offenders, you could send it over to the District Attorney's Office, right? Or if it's something more serious?
That was part of my question, would it go on further?
Yeah, it could.
It depends on where the officer files the charge, but the benefit here is that you have the city prosecutor's office that's focusing on just this jurisdiction where the District Attorney's Office has multiple jurisdictions that they have to deal with. So we could definitely have this addressed here in our court system.
I move to accept this.
Well, we got, this is a discussion item. Really, I just kind of wanted to float this out and see what kind of feedback we got from the public.
No, it's just a discussion.
Right. And I don't know if we want to have Jan come up and maybe give us a little insight into your...
There was a lot of discussion today, too, at the Saba meeting about informing the public that this is a new ordinance. And that's, you know, like, for everything else we do, this would be just as important and how we get that information out and letting them know that this is a new finable offense.
First of all, I do realize that kids getting alcohol supplied by, you know, the adults in their lives, it's not always their parents. We're talking about adults in general. A lot of times it's an older brother or sister. And there are ways kids get a hold of alcohol, you know, they use fake IDs and, you know, and a lot of times our convenience store clerks are not trained. And so, I mean, there are a lot of steps that I feel like Shawnee needs to take, and this is one of the first steps, to really changing the environment around our kids, you know? They go to school, they hear all day, "You're not supposed to drink," and "You're not supposed to do all these things," you know, in these school programs. And then we send them out into a community that says, "Can I buy you a Bud?" You know? And so this is a part of changing the environment around our kids in this town. I didn't think that you would be naive enough to think that our kids weren't using, but I did bring the latest survey results from a survey that we did just last spring. And I'll just send this around, you can look at it at your leisure, but just kind of look at the binge drinking. They define binge drinking as five or more drinks at one sitting. And just with binge drinking, we have 20% of our 10th graders that said that, yeah, they binge drank. So, and this is interesting, has interesting information, too, on where they said they got it, you know, not as far as, you know, address, where they come from, but did they get it at, you know, from a parent with their permission, without their permission? So it's kind of an interesting thing you can look over on in this material. And these are Shawnee kids. It was given last spring. They were sixth, eighth, and 10th graders then, so this coming fall, they'll be our eighth, our 10th, and our 12th graders. So this is a survey done by the Department of Mental Health that they're doing every two years. We'll be doing it again, we hope, in this spring. So, any questions?
And you guys are going to, you might talk about the pledge and the minor...
Yeah. One of the things we found, we did a town hall meeting in March of 2006, I think, and one of the things we found is that people really wanted to report their neighbors who were like, they knew were giving alcohol to kids across the street or somewhere, but they really didn't want to report it to the police because they didn't really want to get them in trouble and have it come back that their next-door neighbor had reported them. I mean, we've kind of all been uncomfortable with that idea, some more than others. And so we came up with a thing called Minor Detail, which is a way that you can report, but the report comes to Saba, to Shawnee Asset Building Alliance. It's a card. You can also report online. And we write them a letter from Shawnee Asset Building Alliance asking them not, that it was reported, that they gave alcohol, that there was alcohol actually drunk by minors at this residence. "Would you please not give alcohol to our kids? We realize you may not have known about it," you know, just kind of saying, "We noticed what you're doing," okay? And then a copy of the letter would go to the police department. Hopefully, they would like drive by that house, you know, cry or sad every night. But anyway, and we're also wanting to urge this fall, we're going to be urging parents not to give alcohol to other people's kids. It's the name of the campaign, "Other People's Kids." And we'll do that through different means this fall. We'll be doing a kind of a push toward that, just to kind of change the social norm that we have around giving alcohol to other people's kids. We, again, we realize that this is not the only place that kids get alcohol, so we're not laying all the blame on like, parents or anything like that. We just realize this is one piece of the big picture and we're just addressing that piece. Anything else? Great, thank you.
Good job. Wayne, have you had any fallout in Tecumseh the last couple of nights?
I'm not sure.
No? And you would know?
No, I don't know. Glory would, more likely.
Oh, Glory would, okay, all right. Well, we're just asking the wrong person off. We're following her. Okay. Well, we'll let this kind of digest a little bit and put this on officially, get John to do his...
To do our ordinance.
Thing with ordinance. Was there any concerns that you had with that or... Okay. So we'll put this back on and then, in the meantime, of course, continue to educate and even afterwards educate. Again, people aren't going to pay attention until something happens and someone gets fined or, and it'll spread pretty quickly, I think, throughout the community. But hopefully, we get the New Star and Shawneesun to do maybe a little article on this and kind of get it out that, you know, this is something that we did care about.
And you know what? We need to talk to Marilyn Bradford because with school getting ready to start, this would be a great way...
Lee Hamilton was there.
Yeah, to, during the in-processing and orientation process, to kind of put this out to parents that are there. I mean, you know, well, your child has graduated, but I'll have a senior and I have a problem with people having parties.
I'm more concerned about my 13-year-old than my 18-year-old, so I...
Exactly, me too.
I want to try to slow that down. I can't stop it, but I want to slow it down a little bit.
Exactly. Something we have to think about.
They're all different, aren't they?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's move along to number 14. Thanks, Chief, thanks, Jan. Discussion of ordinance number 2077 NS, establishing the Beautification Committee. Mike?
There are a lot more buttons nowadays. Mayor had asked me to kind of talk about this. I know that we've discussed it in the past. As far as Beautification Committee, you have the ordinance that's in front of you. I believe we all would agree that we've made considerable strides within the community since this committee was established with enhancing the entryways and doing a lot of improvements around town. This, I believe, is the area that was in question or needs to be addressed, being section three, and it's primarily those three. We no longer have a Parks Director and the current ordinance calls for two city commissioners. So it is a committee of fi... of seven?
Seven. All right. Yeah, seven. You're the other one.
Quick math.
My concern, you know, this was, we talked about this a couple of years ago, and my concern was that, well, Tom Claybrook actually wanted the two. He always was a part of that, and then he always wanted another person on there, just, I don't know, for kind of backup, I guess, and so the two out of seven would have an idea of where the money was going that we were giving to this committee. And we talked at that time about even expanding it to nine with adding the Convention and Desert Shuro and the Downtown Shawnee.
Right.
And I thought we did that, but I guess maybe we didn't.
We, you know, we talked about it and we were going to add it, and we've been sending them a notice and they...
They don't show up?
They don't show up.
Okay. But the greater concern right now is there are no city commissioners on there once Tom went off. And I would like to see it maybe changed to maybe at least one, so there, because there is money that's being spent in the community and have one representative. We don't have the Parks Director and, you know, maybe add some more citizens on there. I'd love to see more citizens. And one of the people I just, Bob Weaver went over to the Airport Advisory Board, we just passed today, Jim Smith, who is a master gardener and really had the time to do that. And we want people that want to, that have the time and care about what Shawnee looks like, and Nancy Ford's on there now and...
And Tom Terry.
Tom Terry. So that's kind of it. And we really need to get some other citizens involved in this, especially with things like the Horses in the City project as far as the public art project and things like that, that will set us aside separately. We've got, you know, the Veterans Park that we're going to talk about and some things like that, about, you know, what Shawnee want to look like. And it's important that we have representatives from all over the community as well as working with the veterans to put on a really first-class show here, a first-class act, and honor those people that have sacrificed for us. So, but that, my concern was the mainly when going and looking at this is trying to get involvement from city commissioners and I, you know, again, I'm involved in a whole lot of things, so I prefer that someone else step up and be a part of this and commit to being at the meeting, even if the meeting has to move to another time. And I talked to Mike about that. It's 1:30 on Mondays, which is like the first Monday? First Monday of the month or...
Yes, first.
First Monday?
And that time actually was changed because Dr. Hadley, when he was on the commission, was on the committee and changed the time and day to accommodate his schedule and then he got off.
So it can be adjusted, potentially. The, and then, of course, like I said, the Parks Director's no longer in place, so we would have to change this, right?
Correct.
This is an ordinance that we have. So to change to maybe one and increase it to five citizens?
Correct, to keep the same numbers.
Okay. So that's the main point. And if anybody was volunteer, beyond areas from the city commission side, I would, I'd like to hear from them, so. Okay, good, you're close. You're like across the street.
I'm across the street anyway.
And you're downtown. Need the park beautification, so. So John, do we need to bring this back or can we?
I don't know, we need to bring it back. She said to discuss.
Okay, all right, with those changes. Was there anything else on here that we need to address while we're on here? Okay, so.
No, there is something in there on terms and, you know, we just need to make sure that nothing has expired on Nancy or Tom. I don't believe it has. I don't believe, I don't think the ordinance actually has been in effect for six years.
Okay. November of '02?
This year.
Okay, okay.
Now, this will come back with reduce to one commissioner and increase to five citizens.
And take out the parks.
Take out parks.
Take out parks.
Okay. All right, so that's all we need to do on that, right? Okay, moving right along. What you guys been waiting on? Fifteen, discuss recommendation of the Beautification Committee to move the proposed location of Veterans Memorial Park from Main and Broadway Streets to Woodland Park.
The, this was a discussion item at the Beautification Committee last week, and although there wasn't a formal vote, there was an agreement as far as, you know, yes, we want a Veterans Park, we agree that, you know, what the proposal really would not fit at Broadway and Main, and in concept, agreed to locating on Memorial, or Memorial Park, on Woodland Park, just immediately north of the Carnegie Library where the VA sits. So I believe that, you know, we want to make sure that there are a few things, a few elements in there that we, that should be well thought out, well planned, that we look possibly at a professional design, not saying that, you know, the design that you'll see here in a moment isn't professional-looking, but make sure that we have bid documents where we can actually take it and bid it and we know the materials, we know we're going to have a flagpole and we're six, I believe, six, seven, that we have them properly anchored. I mean, things, you know, make sure that it's designed properly by a professional. I do have a call-in to the landscape architecture firm that's doing our MacArthur Street project that they said that they could get me a cost estimate. They haven't been able to get to it because the individual was on vacation last week, but he felt like he could have something to me next week. As a conceptual design, what they would do is we would hire them, they would meet with the veterans group, with Beautification Committee, or if any of you, or however you would like to set it up, and come back with some ideas, and then we could either put it out for a public vote or, you know, whatever process you would choose. So, you know, I will have those numbers next week and I'd have a better idea. Mr. Smith would, indicated to me that he had his information that he'd like to present to you, if that's okay.
I understand this. Bill Ford's with us tonight, too, and he's had some interaction on how, you know, helping with the design and that proposal, so.
And that's the location, basically.
Okay.
As far as immediately north of Carnegie Library. That's a little bit larger than what they had anticipated, but it'd be immediately east of the Totem Pole.
Do either one of you guys want to comment on that? I mean, we'll just kind of move this thing forward, so. That really surprises me, Tom, that you'd want to comment. You're so shy.
I wore my suit and tie tonight, special for y'all.
You look good.
You wore it for a while.
I clean up pretty good once that scrub brush gets through. We decided that with the veterans, and there's, I'm just sitting here counting roughly, there's 15 veterans in this room at the present time, and the park up here wasn't big enough considering what the veterans have done for this community. Actually, I put a piece of paper on your desk for Potawatomi County showing the amount in millions of dollars that these veterans bring into this county each year. The millions of dollars that's spent just by the veterans alone. In my folder, I have a list of 9,694 veterans from the state of Oklahoma who have given their life either through natural attrition and death or from the battlefield, who have put in their time in the military, worn the uniform, to give you the rights that you have today. This is my, I understand my, design. I have asked these other gentlemen and the veterans groups to come in with me and come up with the ideas. I've talked to Jim Sims on this, as a gravel-packed walkway from Broadway up to the star. The star, and Mr. Ford's with me on some of this, and some of this work, we still want to add on, too. Oh, I understand that. I'm grateful. But we're going to, we would like to see as a proposal, a gravel walkway back here as the cage link, a big rock in the middle. Not so big you can't get over it, but just to simulate the trials and tribulations that the guys in the military had to go through. Jim Sims is aware of this and he said it's great by him in his wheelchair. He can overcome those obstacles, too. But we want, the star is Mr. Callen. Mr. Callen has often done a five-foot circle in the United States Civil, that we can put a 35-foot flag in the center. He's also often done a three-foot circle in blue of each one of the military organizations that we can put a 30-foot flag in to. They're out there, the corners of the star. Gentlemen at the American Legion in Tecumseh asked me if we would change the star. This is 20 feet, 50 feet, 45 footer from the center to any point of the star. The star is vindicated at 50 feet to 50 states of the United States. Gentlemen asked me if I could change the star to 21. And I asked the significance, is that for a veteran, most of them have 21 guns with it. No, I didn't want to change the star. However, if there's a space properly in the park, from the wall, the star is 21 feet. This is the area here that drops off down to get towards the swimming pool. Be a beautiful place to do a gouge out up here. And I'm sure Mr. Callen, with his finesse, could make us some of those concrete rocks that we're going there to simulate the wall, and I would love to see every one of these names on there to commemorate the veterans that have given their life to make on Oklahoma State, it is. And maybe a special place for the Pot County veterans. We have a list of those also, but it's nowhere near as big. An account has been opened at Bank First in the name of the Shawnee Veterans Memorial Park. Downtown Association, Ms. Davis, has given me the list of the gentleman that makes the bricks, including the pricing on them. So they are available. David has already talked to, or attempted to get the Vietnam Wall in. We would love to see the wall come in at the inception of this thing. It's at least a three-year, is that correct? Roughly a three-year wait for the wall to come in. We can get 2008, but it will cost anywhere from $4,000 to $6,000 for the wall to come in, and their restrictions would be to take the complete area from here all the way back to the senior center. They would have to have that much room for the wall, plus a wide area, pre-prepared for the wall to come in, 24-hour surveillance and so forth and so on, which, my thoughts on this, and with Mr. Ford, these flags would go up and never come down, 24-hour daylight. There is electricity there. As for vandalism, I doubt it. I don't believe you'll find any of these gang bangers around here that really want to get it uptight with an IRA veteran. As for them, I'm sure I don't want to see them.
Explain a little bit about the bricks, because you and I talked about that, and let's just kind of let everybody know what the vision is on the bricks.
The bricks can run up to $150 apiece. The cheaper brick would run $25. Would be a four-by-eight brick with one to two lines, 13 spaces per line, for $25 with the veteran's name, rank, shell number, whatever you want to put on that brick to go into the ground. And as I said, these are, would be ground level. I've spent my time in the military. I got walked on by my drill instructors. I got walked on by my senior commanders, and I won't mind putting my brick on the ground and let you walk on that, too. Be my privilege. If, and this would be, as I said, a start and increasingly add to it as we get to some of these other parks. Mr. Ford wants to go around and visit some of the others. I've seen some beautiful places and there's some fine things at some of the other parks that could be added as we go along and bring this into something where people would be tickled to death to come downtown and see it. It's not exactly downtown, but it's close enough to downtown areas where there's walking distance. Money, I think Mr. Dougherty, during the Jew team, a couple of us walked up on the hill and I asked him to kind of close your eyes and look and see, visualize this thing, if you will. And my main question from Mr. Dougherty was, "What's it going to cost me?" I gave a lot of years of my life... I gave a lot of years of my life to pay for this thing, and so has a few of these other guys out here, but with the help of the city commission, city, you have people here who can actually write grant requests, there are sufficient funds at ODBA, state of Oklahoma, and the federal government, if the grant is written, to pay for almost anything we want to do at this place. The VFW has already offered to buy a flagpole to go in this group, I'll buy a flagpole out of my pocket for the Marine Corps, sir. We're pretty well represented tonight. In case you're not aware, Mr. Boardman is the DAV commander, Al Wright is the VFW, you know Mr. Cecil Johnston with the American Legion, I'm with the First Marine Division Association, so we're, we're here tonight. Of course, we've got the Army sitting up here, too.
I get the Navy.
Thank you, sir. Your consideration on this, you know, and we're asking for this portion of the park, but we would also like to have access to the rest of it. And in order to go down into the park to some of the trees, someone may want to dedicate a tree to a veteran, there may be somebody that thinks his relatives were as solid as an oak, and there's an oak tree down there, and we could put a little block of concrete down along the side with a plaque on top, and dedicate that tree to a, and yes, man, there's enough trees down there, and if there's not enough trees, I'll buy a couple more and put it there. But if we can get this approved by y'all tonight, then we will go forward, and Mr. Ford has an architect, and I think, didn't you say something about an architect on your end? And we can bring it back to you, and much, because I'm not an artist, I just, this is in my head, I had to put it out, I had to get it out, and I've been harassing this city for 30 years, what are you doing for the veterans, and this is the time, this is the place, and this may be the item to start with. Questions? Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Smith, Thomas J., United States Marine Corps, 653066, I'm not required to say anymore.
Thank you.
I understand your question, which is, do we explain the overall improvement of the design? Now, that's a city hall, I think, I'm going to see the beautification committee.
Okay. For the ones who don't know me, my name's Dave Boardman, I'm the commander of Chapter 54, the Save Our Veterans here in Shawnee. We are 100% behind this project. Our unit will buy a flagpole. Mainly thing is, we have many young men and women coming back every day. Some are able to walk home, some are not, some never come home. This is the right thing to do, it's the right time. With the Centennial coming up, we can get started, now is the right time, it's the right thing to do. Since Shawnee needs, these veterans deserve it, they put their lives on the line, similar to gay brothers. Let's honor these veterans, young, old, men and women, regardless of who they are, let's honor them. Thank you.
I don't think you're going to get any debate out of us. I know how honed Tom is.
How much and how soon do I get it?
Well, and I think something we need to consider, the change in the location. I think it, the change in the location is really going to open up the use of the park because then, for like Veterans Day ceremonies, we have the staging area, we're going to have the spray part, I mean, I really think that'll just be a great addition to that park.
Yeah, I agree.
And with the Broadway Street renovations, it's just, it's just a wonderful location.
May I interject, one other thing we would like to see happen? There was a question about changing the name of the park from Woodland to Veterans, possibility of adding to the name, if we can't change it, to Woodland Park, i.e., another poster on that board down there that says this is also a veterans' park. Won't cost you, I'll buy a piece of wood.
All right. I don't know, where does Woodland park come from, just because it's got a lot of trees, or, I don't know that history there.
Tree City.
Yeah, I'm just, we have to tell us a little bit of history.
I'm still doing some research, but it...
Could it be Woodland Veterans Park?
Yeah, that's exactly something I think of.
Does that make everybody happy, right?
Yeah. Mr. Beard, Mr. Farrell, and Edley, Easlee, or someone that settled this whole outfit, and...
Yeah. Okay.
Well, we've got a Boy Scout Park, we should have an veterans' park.
So you posed the question about who would ultimately be approving the design, which I would assume anything that, after you cover saying you weren't assuming, but anything that Bill Ford's involved in is going to be a quality class presentation, and I know, I know, I feel confident saying that, but what is the, I mean, would beautification committee, us is the ultimate owner of the property?
Yeah, beautification, the beautification, the ton of the little fight on.
Okay.
Final approval by the veterans' groups.
Sure, it's a joint thing.
You guys will be on that development, and like I said, Bill, I'm sure we'll, we'll know what to do, and I don't think we're going to see a lot of problem there, so... So do I have a motion with all that in there somewhere?
All right. We don't need a motion.
Well, we're just discussing, it just says discuss.
Sweet. Moving around a little bit.
Wait, one more question for Jim. Would it be possible to get somebody working on the grant?
Yeah, I just made notes, I'll get it now, I'll get it processed, sir.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Sixteen, consider appointing three Shawnee city representatives to evaluate the provisions in the current West Watkins contract between the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County Development Authority, and the city of Tecumseh, and to meet with Tecumseh representatives. I guess the last meeting, which I guess was the first of the month, right, Wayne, the Tecumseh city commission voted, or the mayor appointed himself, and the city manager, and Linda Prater, a city commissioner, to represent the city of Tecumseh, and my understanding is they asked Joe Tarran, or Jim Thompson did, asked Joe Tarran to be involved with these meetings representing the PCDA.
That was a decision made by the PCDA board.
Oh, the PCDA board, yeah, okay.
Yes, and that was an action, shape and form, about seeking PCDA for one last meeting.
Okay.
Initially, he would not be involved in discussions, it would be by city, Tecumseh, city of Shawnee, with Dr. Tarran coming in as native representative of PCDA. Mr. Thompson and I both serve on that board as well.
This has been requested, actually, by the city of Tecumseh because it's moved all over the place. Jim and I had two previous meetings with the former mayor and city manager over this very subject, and then the mayor didn't get re-elected, and the city manager left, so we now have a new city manager, a new mayor, and some new commissioners in Tecumseh. I know that Jim and I have had a meeting with, one other meeting with the new mayor and city manager, you and Linda have had a meeting with the city manager, when the monsoon was here, I was in Tulsa for another meeting, or I would have been there. This is a fairly complex issue, there are some requests that have been made of us that are going to have to be dealt with, especially financially. We're on a 60-day request from the city of Tecumseh to try to come up with some kind of resolution to this problem pertaining to a contract that was written eight years ago or so, and, you know, like...
1990.
Eight years, is that sound right?
Water, water.
It was 1990, 1990.
91? Okay. Well, time flies, six, eight years, whatever, it feels like that.
91.
Okay. It is critical that we have representation that has some institutional knowledge here because obviously there's going to be a lot of questions as to some detail, so I don't know how we want to proceed. I kind of had hoped that they would have picked three elected officials and brought the city managers in, and maybe city attorneys in when it was proper, but they've chosen to appoint the city manager, and...
They can, they can, once they're elected, they're just jury, they can.
Oh, that's right, they only have five. That's right, okay.
Okay.
I guess that's a good reason why.
Why in the world would we want elected officials anyway?
I don't know.
What about, though?
I know that, again, however this falls out, I would like to see Jim involved because he's been in the details of this thing, digging out the, we've been dealing with this for three years, really, starting with the water resource committee, you know, got all the details and the history, and got everybody coming forward with what was going on, and we kind of rocked along for a while, and now we have a whole new group that's a little excited, even though the lakes are all pretty full now, they're still a little excited about what the future means, because some point in the near future, we're inevitably going to probably have another drought, as we've seen these cycles come and go, but it is going to take a lot of informational meetings before there's actually a three-on-three with Tecumseh, and I'm sure they're thinking the same thing, that, you know, they're going to have their little, I don't know if you want to call them strategy sessions or informational sessions, about what does this contract say? It was written, from what I could tell, fairly open, fairly poorly.
It's a poorly-written contract, I mean, that's, realistically, and I have some insight about how, who wrote the contract and stuff, but yeah, it's...
And how contracts are written, so, so we're dealing with a pretty loosey-goosey kind of deal, is part of the problem, so interpretation now, and we want to be good partners with Tecumseh, you know, there's no way we want to continue to have a wall between us and other communities, I mean, we're just too close together, and so finding that compromise that it is good for them and good for us, not jeopardizing the future of our citizens, and not harming them with their future as well, is definitely critical, so I don't know what your pleasure is as to what that appointment would be, any suggestions, again, it's a...
They didn't bring any names before.
Kind of cut this thing out, so...
Is Joe Tarran?
Joe's for PCDA.
So...
City manager?
City manager, I think, for sure. Linda's been, of course, she's a detailed person anyway, she's digging down in there, so I would volunteer to be involved, unless Pam, you want to be involved?
I'd be glad to be involved, I mean, I think we have some contractual concerns here.
I would be happy to step back and let Jim take my place, if Linda would be willing to do that, you know, it's just, it's important to me that, I mean, I know a lot of the details, but you being, having contract law, and would be important, I think, Jim with his knowledge and Linda with her detail, would suit me just fine. I've got plenty of other things to do, and I trust that you guys can do the job, so that would be my recommendation or my appointment, if I had that ability, or would make that recommendation for you guys to approve. What do you guys want to hear?
You know what, Linda, Linda Tarran is him.
Right.
I didn't hear anything from Linda, is that all right with Linda?
Yeah. It's, yeah, I mean, I would like to be involved, but I do think that, I mean, it's critical that we spend the time that it takes to get this done properly, and it is going to take some time, and, you know, I'm going through that, too, and I have been involved with some of this before, and I've had conversations, you know, I've been in conversations with Tecumseh and what some of their intent is, and, I mean, we can get through this, but we have a deadline to do it, we definitely have a deadline that's been requested, and 60 days is a short time. I don't know if anything else would come up, and if we should just, you know, recognize an alternative, an alternate, for some reason, because I do think that we need to always have three that are there, because one person hears something the other person doesn't hear, and those kinds of things, too, so I want to make sure that we never have just two go, I mean, if some, just something comes up where you just cannot attend. To be the alternate, so we can do...
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll have her be an alternate, just in case.
I would feel better with that, so that we never, so that we never miss a meeting, we never, we're always prepared.
Okay, that sounds good, okay.
Do you have a motion?
Motion, make it official.
We'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Motion by Commissioner O'Neill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Young. Paul Rolfe.
O'Neill.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Will.
Aye.
Okay, Godspeed. Okay, seventeen, consider acceptance of taxiway reconstruction project and placing maintenance bonds into effect.
Basically, what we have here is a recommendation to adopt, or to take the airport project, which was 340088-011-2006, of which we were over on, on cost, and that overage was due to having to dig up more asphalt than we, than we had really planned to do, and the original, the original project was supposed to be done by Blakow Engineering, turned out that they got wound up in a, in a problem with some of the things at the T-hanger ramp, and also some areas up on Taxiway Alpha between the terminal building and the next taxiway, which would have been delta. Anyway, so JLT was picked to come in to clean this up and put in the pavement, and like I said, the overage, $3,639, was due to having to dig up more asphalt than we really needed, really thought we had to dig. Like to see if we could close it, like I said, we had, we had an overage, and that's on the, on the project here.
Any questions?
So it's been inspected and everything's okay?
Yes.
You're ready to...
Been inspected?
Okay.
Have you inspected the taxiway?
No, no, sir. Sure have.
Horizon inspected.
They did inspect it, and they signed off on it?
Yes.
You comfortable with them? You know, Horizon?
Horizon, they're the airport consultant.
Been our, been our consultant since '03, '04.
It's not the one we had problems with, was it, on the, over by the T-hanger kind of deal?
Yes. Well, it wasn't, it wasn't Horizon, that was the big problem over there, it was the Blakow, Blakow construction, yeah, and Blakow, after, after that period, we, they moved on over, they knew they had a problem with the taxiway around the T-hanger, because it varied in different grades, grading, some places it was steep, some places it was fairly flat, and we still haven't corrected that, but they moved over to the taxiway, and they, and they did a real good job on taking care of the bumps and the holes that we had between the asphalt and the concrete, and then we moved up into the next taxiway, and they did well there, too, and at that point, now, it all came to a head with, with, back to the T-hanger situation. So they went out with, for another, the consultant went out for another bid, and that's where JLT stepped in, and they had a little... And they had a little problem with, as far as having to dig up more asphalt than they had been predicted by Blaco.
Should we do our own inspection or, I mean, I, we're, we're gonna accept it, you know, so I would feel more comfortable with our guys taking a look at it than their guys.
Jerry, we need to do this right now. Can we have...
We can, we can, yeah, we can debate. We can, uh...
Let's do that. All right. I feel more comfortable with that, too.
Yes, sir, but, I mean, all the weekend, you go out and there's a block, you have to one, you know, as far as maybe their construction is also...
Right.
Right, it's kind of, basically, it's, it's the, 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 your, your...
Yeah.
In our recommendation, we have to defer this to the next meeting. Mr. Parker can come back with a recommendation.
He needs something to do, anyway, all right? Got a little free time?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we need a motion to...
Make a motion to defer this to our next meeting.
Motion by Vice Mayor Peterson. Second by...
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Stevens. Call Rohl, please.
Peterson?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Schran?
Aye.
O'Neill?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Number eighteen.
Wave Technology?
Yep.
They moved in, basically moved in during the winter, never turned on the air conditioner until summertime, turned on the air conditioner every winter. So, basically, we have, we went in with a, with a recommendation that were, that was as-is, but most of the time, you don't rent something to somebody as-is. So, we, we feel like we, we need to, we need to do the air conditioning.
I probably powered all that stuff up and checked it out, you know, because we had to, like, charge everything and, and, you know, check all the mechanical function. I thought, I thought we did that. That wasn't you guys, right? Who would've done that? One of you three, probably, huh? Who was it? Ee, ee, mi, mi, mo. Anybody do, who checked the, the physical plan, I guess?
I think, if I'm, I'm stepping on my best toes, but there were people who went over and inspected and said, yes, there, turned it on, it, it appeared to work. And then, once they really start to, to build up and say, okay, we need some, we need some coolant in here, it wasn't there.
What kinda money are we talking?
I don't see any dollar signs attached to it.
There isn't any dollar signs there. I don't, I'm not really sure. I don't know if we've gotten a bid on that or not.
Love to look like it, though.
We own, we own the building and whether they're in it or not, it's gonna have to be maintained for eight years. And they're still waiting on their second round of funding, trying to get funding for their next cycle. And they indicated to Jerry that they're not sure if they would stay. That's a, kind of a hard line. But I don't know, it is our building.
It is our building. Most, most people who...
We should know the cause before we jump into something.
Yeah, and just refresh my memory, what's their lease out there?
How much a month? Seventy-seven hundred a month.
And how many employees do they have right now?
I think there's probably like fourteen.
Twelve, fourteen, something like that.
Are those local people that have been hired or those people that have come from out of town or, you know?
A few local people, mainly the clerical, because a lot of them are the...
Are commuting in.
Are the high-security analysts, whatever that, what's that, what's those ratings? G or something, ratings or...
GMs.
Yeah.
Do you know what kinda heating and cooling system they have now?
They've gone through four different approaches to it, but the individual over there who maintains that equipment has said that he could, he could set it up a lot cheaper than what we'd have to do with buying the bigger and better...
They're talking, they're talking replacement, not repair.
Yes, yes.
We still got, should have some dollars.
Yeah, I'd feel more comfortable if we kinda knew what we were getting into on the money. And, I mean, you know, we're, we could just say, oh, yeah, we'll do it and it could be, you know, a hundred thousand dollars or whatever, and you're like, wait a minute.
Well, it all depends. It could involve water towers or heat pumps, I don't know.
Yeah, we don't know.
Is it not working at all right now?
Um, well, I think it blows a little air, but that's about it. And the system they have, the system they wanna put in is a lot cheaper than the ones that were there now, you know, when they were put in.
Well, then, they need to give us some information on the system they wanna put in, 'cause if we're gonna pay for the system that they've picked out, we need to make sure that that's the correct system long-term for a building that we own, that they may walk off and leave if their funding doesn't come through or if they decide they don't wanna be here anymore. And then, we're stuck with an ineffective system or one that's not really equipped to handle the building. Should we get a new last year?
I thought at the last advisory meeting, airport advisory meeting, we had some numbers.
We had some numbers.
Wasn't it like five grand or eight grand or something like that? I mean, that sticks in my mind for some reason.
That's mine, too, but I don't have it off the top of my head.
Well, I'd like to see numbers and I'd like to see someone who's, I mean, who's an expert or just someone to say, yes, that's the type of system that we need to put in, that type of building to get the most efficient use and long-term dollars, get the best bang for our buck here. Somebody over that direction, I'm sure, can help us with that.
Somebody with striped shirts or...
Yeah.
Man, we're just piling on you today. We wait till the end of the meeting to do that, though.
Yeah.
Oh, you're sick last week? Are you feeling ill again?
Yeah. Well, we're sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So, we're going to defer this item also?
I would move to defer this item until we have more information.
Second. Mr. Stevens?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Schran. Call Rohl, please.
Stevens?
Aye.
Schran?
Aye.
O'Neill?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Number nineteen. Consider awarding bids for replacement. A twelve-inch water line on Gordon Cooper Drive opened at seven-two of oh-seven...
Right.
There were five bids opened, they were reviewed and lost the best bid received was from the key utility contractors for $256,810. We've got $188,000 in the budget for it, but I think this is a really important project. We have some money that we're planning for the future for the water plant that we're trying to come up with $900,000 in the next four or five years. We can use $68,000 if we change all of that to put with this and get the water line put in and still achieve our goal. They were trying to do for the water plant, this line was supplied, tribal complexes, the TCDAs, summer as well, the hospital. And this is one we've been talking about for years, which breaks, and we're in the river, we can't fix it. And even if we got a contractor, it's special pipe, you know, just grab a piece of pipe and we'll fix it. So, it's gonna be down for a considerable amount of time and when that happens, there's gonna be a lot of people without water. And this would give us a twelve-inch feed out there that wouldn't, that wouldn't cross the river. It's already hanging on the bridge, so we just need to take off, just south of the bridge and go the hardest heat. And it's a, it's a needed thing, I think.
The United National High Service Funds.
Right.
That we're banking for the year.
The, you had budgeted $188,000?
Right.
Where, where's the other 68,000?
High Service Funds.
Right.
So, we got a GL number we can bank it here, here, or carve it into them if we want to figure it out here.
What cover?
This is your project.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion?
We'll pick some.
Motion by Commissioner Schran.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Young. Other discussion? Call Rohl, please.
Schran?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
O'Neill?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, thank you. Your business?
Yeah.
Administrative reports?
It snuck up on you, huh?
Um, this, what I'm gonna talk about first, yes, Polycarts. Um, I spoke with Auto Container today and they're the distributor of the Polycarts. And Polycart placement will begin by Monday, the 23rd, is what they're telling me right now. August 1st is the target date for automated pickup to begin. Could happen July 30th, but I'm staying with the August 1st. You'll find a flyer at your desk entitled Be Poly Smart From the Start at your seat. And these are going out with the water bills. We sent the first round of flyers out with Zone Three on July 9th. And the next ones will go out with Zone One on July 23rd. And then, the flyer will go out again in Zone Three bills, July 30th. And the same information is available on our website and it's running as a PowerPoint presentation on Channel 30. And this information has also been provided to the Sun, News Star, and the Daily Oklahoman. And as people are calling in with other questions, I am modifying this. However, the ones that are going out with the bills are already printed. So, the information on Channel 30 continues to change a little bit. As people give me questions, I try to address those and add them. And the city will be divided up into four quadrants, so pickup days could change. So, you may not have the same pickup day for your trash as you did previously. But all yard waste will continue, will be picked up on Wednesdays. And we're diligently working on those quadrant routes and hope to have those placed with the flyers, the blue flyers that you see, which we placed on top of the Polycarts, taped to the Polycarts. So, that's what I have. Do you have any questions?
So, when you talk about placement, I'm just gonna come home someday and my Polycart's gonna be sitting there?
It's gonna be sitting where it should be, in your yard, facing the direction that it should be when the truck's gonna pick it up.
And at what point do I call to get my second Polycart? And where do I call to do that?
You can call utility billing and that's, that's actually on that flyer that I handed out, Be Poly Smart. But I like, it's good that we're getting the information out. You can call utility billing here at City Hall or you can come by City Hall to get on the list for the second Polycart.
And will that second Polycart come at the same time as the first or is that something that'll kinda happen later, you know?
We have a few calls already and we're gonna try to address those calls now.
Perfect.
And then, we'll address them also as we get, get calls.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Schran?
What kind of considerations have been done so far towards the elderly and the handicapped as far as their Polycarts? So, are they still gonna have a, gonna put a handicap sticker on them?
It won't be a handicap sticker, but there'll be a way to, for the drivers to know.
There was some question about they had to go to their doctor and get it ripped. Does that still...
They don't actually have to go to the doctor. They can call their doctor and have them fax Allied a note that says, this person is handicapped, please give them curbside service.
Are they handling those requests now?
Yes. And I talked to Alaska and so far, she's only gotten three requests. This is the lady from Allied. And I know that we, but their drivers also are, are talking about the ones that they're currently servicing.
And I know, well, and it's kinda changed over time, though, because initially, when Mr. Bowles was here, it was like, well, you don't really have to get a doctor's note, we just need to know that you need the assistance. And now, all of a sudden, it's like, well, you have to have a doctor's note.
You know, I talked to Mr. Bowles about that a couple of days ago and he said that if they can show their handicap placard that they have in their car, then they've already basically got...
Been established, right, right.
A handicap. But, you know, you're gonna run into trouble there, too, with people bringing in someone else's handicap placard. So, you know, we're, but...
Do they deal directly with Allied on that or can they do that at the utility department for the handicapped assistance?
We have them going through Allied.
Okay.
Because they're the ones who are actually getting out there, picking them, picking them up.
So, when the Polycart arrives, this will be on it?
Yes.
And will there be a bold letter again that says, put it out again next Wednesday or you're a Friday pickup?
We will have on there what quadrant they are in and what day their quadrant will be picked up. So, yes, it will say, you'll be a Monday pickup, you'll be a Tuesday pickup.
And what day will the yard waste be picked up?
Wednesdays.
And that needs to be on there, too, for their other, for their...
That's being sent out in this for Wednesdays.
Perfect, okay.
What about the folks who want an alley pickup versus front yard pickup for the Wednesdays?
For the yard waste, they'll need to make arrangements with Allied.
Citywide on the yard waste, Wednesday or...
Mm-hmm, citywide. The trucks will be different. You can use your existing cans, bags, or bundles.
So, you can use your existing...
Yes, for the yard waste.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. But not for the regular day pickup.
On my street, there's swam and those cars come by, the trucks come by so fast. And when they put it there, I'm afraid that they're gonna stay and play.
We will have to work those details out with Allied as they're placing them. You know, when we see that there are problems, when, when people say, hey, my cart blew over, a truck ran by, then we'll have to address those things one at a time as they come available.
So, what you're saying, too, is that they're gonna put the cart where they think...
Where they think it will work.
Because, I mean, I, one of my neighborhood has a fairly steep driveway and yard and everything. So, they will place it where it's acceptable to them?
Yes.
Okay.
And they've told me that they're going to either use sidewalk chalk if it's on the curb or some sort of temporary paint to show you, until it rains, where your cart's gonna be. That way, you can kinda get used to where you need to place your cart each time.
There hasn't been any change in the one-way street situation. They're gonna pick up in one direction only, right from either side of the truck.
I don't remember that detail, Commissioner Schran.
I thought he said they had trucks that could pick up from the...
Yeah, he's...
They get out?
Yeah, we didn't change.
Bring it across?
Lick it out manually, bring them around, I think.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't have to put my Polycart in Bertha's yard, yes?
No.
Probably not.
But one thing that people have talked about was when they have their Bridge Club meetings or whatever. Polycarts are only picked up one day a week, so, you know, they may be able to change their Bridge Club day, but if they can't, maybe they can talk to their neighbor and talk to Allied and say, this is my Bridge Club day. I have had conversations with Allied about this. And if they need to, perhaps they can set their Polycart in another spot if it's Bridge Club day.
Yeah.
Or there's a family funeral or something like that.
Surely, they'll accommodate that. I mean, if all of the carts are all clustered at the end of the block or something because of something, I mean, surely, they'll figure all that out.
Because of an event or something.
That's right.
I mean, they're gonna figure out that that Polycart does belong to a home.
Right.
I mean, I would hope...
And there's no others and they couldn't get down the street then. Right.
So, we've tried to think of every scenario that we can, but I'm sure we've missed some things on, on the, on the questionnaire, but we'll continue to upgrade that as questions come in. For instance, a gentleman called me and asked me about what happens when I'm on vacation if they place the cart. And I said, please, make arrangements with your neighbor to take it to your side yard or backyard.
Are there instructions of what to do with the Polycart once the pickup is already re-made?
Yes. I mean, the flyer from Auto should address most of that. This is a flyer that they use in every community. It's just a, it's not specifically made for Shawnee, but it addressed most needs. It's just a, it's not specifically made for Shawnee, but it addressed most needs.
So the most important thing for the seniors to know is that they need to have their physician's contact Allied waste through a fax. Not necessarily to say that they're dis...
A letter, a fax, any reason why they cannot physically handle their cart. If there's anybody who cannot physically handle their cart, just please, at least make contact with the Allied representative. You know, some of these drivers know these homes. And they're really, a lot of the drivers are pretty good.
They need to have extra people available to take these initial calls because, you know, last week, they missed my trash day. I called, no one answered. Then fortunately, they showed up the next day and picked up the trash, because I just slept on the curb. But, you know, that's not the first time, and Timmy's brought it up. You call out there, and nobody answers the phone. Now fortunately, I have Brent Bowles' cellphone, he can answer. But I can leave a message with him. But not everyone has that luxury. And that is, an issue is service. And you're absolutely correct there, that that's lacking a lot of times. And this deal starting off, they need to be ready, because you're gonna have some pissed-off people out real quick.
Yes.
Yeah.
If they're missed that one.
And I'm sending those calls somewhere else.
Well, and Tony, why don't you talk a little bit, the other day when you were at my office, and you were talking about implementing the fine system with Allied, the fact that we really, although there is a fine system, well, there's a fine system in the contract, but it's never been utilized.
Until now.
And so Tony has put that in place. So people need to understand, if you don't get your trash picked up, you need to lodge the complaint. You need to call your commissioner, you need to call Tony, you need to call Allied, and stay on top of it.
Absolutely.
Because that's the only way we're gonna get their attention for true neglect. And I'm not talking about, you know, the day that it rained so hard and, you know, they couldn't get out there. But true neglect, when the drivers just ignore the trash on the curb.
Right.
Right.
They start getting in their pocketbook, they'll react to it.
When we had the rainstorm that came into town, Allied called me, they were worried about the safety of the drivers, the roads, and the trucks. They pulled people off that Tuesday, assured me that they would be back Wednesday. And there was some sort of communication glitch. I was telling the commissioners that they were out. The lady who is the director here in Shawnee was telling me that the trucks were out here, but the operations manager chose to go to Cromwell and Meeker and pick up 54 carts or whatever it was. Um, so come Thursday, Friday, I'm still dealing with trash on the streets. And decided to implement the fine system, which consisted of 62 homes that were reported to me, that was four blocks. So for instance, our former city treasurer, Bertha Young, called in, said Beard Street has not been picked up, and neither has any, you know, no one on my block has been picked up. I took note of that, went and drove the block. So we have invoiced them for $3,100, and that's only 62 homes for a one-day miss, not a three-day miss. So it's just kind of putting them on notice, getting some accountability, that we will do this if we need to.
Did you bypass my neighborhood? I was missed. My whole block was missing. We actually spoke that week.
Yes, I, there were four blocks that were noted, and yours was one of them. And there were more than four blocks that were missed.
Oh, great.
Yeah, Union Street.
But those were the ones that were called in and said, "Me and my block have been missed." And I actually went out and drove them and made sure that they were missed, and just kind of to put them on notice that we will do this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's great.
Just to kinda give you an update on the lake, since we opened it up, things are progressively increasing with people going out to the lake. And just a few stats here on our training. We've got 13 officers that have been trained for lake patrol duty and that were rotating around on the schedule. Six of those officers have been trained for boat patrol, and five officers are trained on the wave runners. And if you don't know, we were able to obtain two wave runners, about $9,000 each, and they're utilizing those out on the lake to help go out and touch base with people in patrol and such, so that really worked out well. Now, one of the problems we're having, and we're gonna try to get this taken care of, is to have some signs made so people know where to get their permits. Try to come up with like a pamphlet in order for officers, should they make contact with somebody that they can give a pamphlet to as to what they, where they need to go in order to get those items, so. Uh, since June 1st, we've had about 100 calls, a little over 100 calls there at the lake. We've written, of course, some speeding citations, but for the most part, as we're trying to get behavior on track, since it hasn't been utilized for a while, the officers have been giving warnings. And then as we, it's kinda like when you get a new traffic light, they put it on flashing until everybody starts noticing it, and then they go ahead and start putting it on cycle. So we're flashing right now, and we'll continue to progress.
Now, what is your patrol craft? Two wave runners and what else?
Two wave runners. We still have the V-Haul. We're still shopping for the pontoon. I wanna make sure that we get the best piece of equipment for the money, because I'd like to have it for some years, so...
But you are utilizing the V-Haul.
We are utilizing the V-Haul, that's correct.
Or we have four-wheelers?
Oh, the four-wheelers out there. We did have an inquiry from an individual that wanted to use a four-wheeler in the Game Refuge area, which is located on and around both the Lake 1 and 2. And according to the current city ordinance, is the use of a, any motor-driven vehicle in the Game Refuge at Shawnee Twin Lakes, 1 and 2 is prohibited without receiving the permission of the Lake Ranger prior to the use of the vehicle. Violation of this section is punishable by a fine of $100. And we've made the decision that we're not gonna have those kind of vehicles out there. Rather than pick and choose, we're just not gonna have them, because they have a tendency to tear up the terrain and such, plus other things that happen with those types of vehicles. People get injured.
Very enough, season, it's a good way to get shot at.
Yeah, so there's a lot of things that we just decided to prohibit the use of them. Anything else? Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Don Lynch, Board's Management Director. Just wanted to report back to you that we did receive a Presidential Disaster Declaration for individual assistance for victims, individuals and families, businesses that were affected by the flooding disaster. So those people who have not contacted FEMA yet, we're encouraging them to do so, even if the insurance covered it, or they don't have any loss. If you had water in your structure, you had damage, call and get on the list now, because six months from now, something might show up, and you need to be in the system, ready to go with that. So 1-800-621-3362 is the number for that. 1-800-621-3362. Later on this week, FEMA will be opening a Disaster Recovery Center here in Shawnee. We're working to get that set up. They'll be alternating back and forth for a couple of weeks between Potawatomi County and Comanche County. So that will be open, where people can come in and visit one-on-one. And instead of doing the tele-registration, if they wanna do that, or visit with various representatives from all the federal agencies. For example, the IRS, my friends at the IRS, the Kinder Gentle IRS, send us some information to talk about how you can go about claiming loss on your tax returns, if you had a loss, or if you need to file for an extension on time for filing your returns to do that. And they have all that information there. They're able to help you with that process. It really is a good process for people who are needing that assistance to be able to go through, so we're fortunate that we'll have that Disaster Recovery Center set up. Information we'll be running on cable Channel 30. We'll, of course, make announcements to KGFF and KIRC, and get the information out to the local newspapers as well, just to remind everybody about that. But I wanted to bring that to your attention. Uh, we continue to hope for the declaration for the public assistance side of the House. That request was sent in by the governor late last week. For several counties in Oklahoma, it to be declared, and so we hope that we'll hear something back on that request this week. So any questions you have for me on that? Okay, thanks.
Uh, let's talk about rationing a little bit. The, uh, my gut tells me that we should stay on Level 1 rationing. The reason for that is that the research that we did when we were in the thick of the drought, and the experts we talked to from literally around the country, indicated that, as we all know, droughts run in seven, eight, seven and eight-year cycles, and that periodically during that time, there'll be two- and three-month periods that are extremely wet. And they've shown the data, in fact, some of the data's been presented in this form for that matter. However, I cannot quantitatively justify staying on rationing, so we're going off Level 1 rationing starting tomorrow. I will tell you, I still think that it's a good idea to be on Level 1. Level 1 is not really a bit of inconvenience. However, the data just isn't there right now, so we're going off, and then we'll see what the future holds. I will also encourage people to continue to think about conservation of water. It's our most precious resource. We don't know what the next few months or years are going to hold. We're doing well now, and we're grateful, and then we'll monitor it, and we'll take it as it goes. Any comments or observations?
You have already placed the quantitative data to put us back on Level 1 when that occurs at a certain level in certain gallons, million gallons per day.
That's correct. It is a, no pun intended, but a fluid criteria, meaning that there are three specifics here, the level of the lake, the general climate conditions, and the daily demand on the plant. All three of those are factored into the criteria. So we're going off Level 1 as of midnight tonight. No more rationing for a while. Anything else? That does it on administrative reports.
Uh, Commissioners' comments? I have this review to start. One is, I'm requesting that we have the city manager's job performance review, which is an annual, usually in August occurrence. Those forms will be put in our box. And Timmy, I think, is going to be maybe gone to Japan, probably won't be back on next meeting, potentially. I know he comes back that day. So I'm gonna request that we look at that in the executive session on August the 20th, but we'll have a month to have that form, and I hope you guys will take serious consideration in throwing out each section of that performance, and we'll meet hopefully then with city manager at that time. The other thing, as you read the paper, and was confirmed to me actually before then, when Governor Henry was here for the flood review, we are, we were, are going to be awarded a $200,000 grant, matching grant on our sports complex. We have information from the, finally from the School and Commission on the schedule. Hopefully, again, next month, whether it's the 6th or the 20th, we'll be considering the contract on an annual basis. And potentially, we could be moving dirt this fall on that project for soccer and baseball, and hopefully we can build some momentum from that point. So I'm kinda anxious for that to happen. And again, the grant has to, it comes from the tourism grant that we, that Mike applied for, has to be used for infrastructure, so we can't use it for a lease or any of that, but we can use it to help build some of the fields, parking lots, whatever. So there's a lot of people real anxious to see that happen. The other thing is, we have, and I'll bring this up again at the next meeting, here in Shawnee, we will have one of the regional listening sessions for the Oklahoma Comprehensive Water Plan will be Tuesday, August the 7th, at 6:30 PM at the VOTAC. And I've got a little information here that Joe Benton from the OSU Extension Center is, OSU's kinda helping put these things together, but there is, the entire process of revising this water plan will take about four years. Over the next several months, which actually started about two or three months ago, starting with the west coming this way, citizens' concerns will be gathered through the local input meetings. Next, a series of regional meetings and planning workshops will be held to consolidate and prioritize the list of concerns, as well as develop possible solutions. Finally, a statewide town hall meeting will be held to try to reach a consensus on the issues. The final result will be a comprehensive report submitted to the Oklahoma Water Resource Board for consideration as the basis of the water plan update. We're fortunate to be able to have that session here. The closest other ones will be Norman, Chandler, Ada. So we're really fortunate, again, it started out in the west. The unfortunate thing is that we're gonna have a lot of issues and a lot of concerns, and my understanding is, there has to be one thought that gets taken away from this. So we've got a lot of, a lot of things to try to build consensus on, but we're fortunate to have that opportunity. You can also go to their website and see the comments from the other areas, and you can also provide some input at that point. But that would be at OKWaterPlan, that's all one word, dot info. So anyone that's interested in taking a look at what other people are thinking. Of course, out in the west, my understanding is, they're all concerned, a lot of agricultural people were there, concerned about how they're gonna, what are their crops, and they have a lot of deep wells, and we have a different issue here with surface water. So I encourage everyone to be there. The Oklahoma Municipal League wants us to be there to represent the interest of the communities and municipalities. I assume that everyone, all the other communities in our area will be there as well. And maybe some of this conversation between Shawnee and Tecom, so we can have somewhat of a cohesive thought about how we're going to take care of ourselves in the future. So I just wanna mention those opportunities, so. Uh, Tuesday, August the 7th, at 6:30 at the VOTAC in the Seminar Center. Okay, other comments?
July 21st, this coming Saturday, will be the International Dinner, see Ann Davis, or call Ann Davis at ALS Jury regarding tickets. That'll be this coming Saturday.
You want to say?
Same in the dix.
Same in the dix?
Yeah, same in the dix.
In the evening?
Yeah.
Seven, something like that?
6:30.
6:30, okay.
I would like to ask the city attorney if there'll be, I understand it's gonna be on the next meeting, who would declare a vacancy award 6.
So there are bigger than two actions. The first action is to accept their information, and the second action is to clarify the vacancy.
Then we advertise at that point for a couple of weeks, and then review the applications, and then set up the interview process. So we're into the, probably first meeting in September on interviews.
That's assuming that we vote, yes.
Right.
And then we vote to advertise, I guess, okay.
Right, okay.
If we choose to do so.
Okay.
Right?
Absolutely. Other comments?
That was mine.
Okay, do we have a motion adjourned now? So, motion by Commissioner Young. Second by Commissioner O'Neil. Call roll please.
Young.
Hi.
O'Neil.
Hi.
Neil.
Hi.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Shawnee.
Hi.
Motion carries, thank you. I'll open the meeting for the Shawnee Municipal Authority, July 16, 2007. We have a quorum. Consider approval of consent agenda. So moved. Motion by Commissioner Strand.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Young. Call roll please.
Strand.
Hi.
Young.
Hi.
Peterson.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
O'Neil.
Hi.
Neil.
I'm ready, move along here.
You are.
Can we do that? We're synchronized over here. synchronized voting. Uh, administrative reports?
Next SMA agenda will have the supplemental budget.
Okay. Supplemental budget, okay. Okay. New business? Motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Young, second by Vice Mayor Peterson. Call roll please.
Young.
Hi.
Peterson.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Strand.
Hi.
O'Neil.
Hi.
Neil.
Hi.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, we'll open the meeting for the Shawnee Airport Authority, July 16, 2007. We have a quorum. Consider approval of consent agenda, since we prefer those, I guess that's gotta change, right? We're not confirming the action.
That's what we did, we heard them.
So, motion?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Mayor Peterson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stevens.[1761.92]